Any Board of Chosen Freeholders? Hello?
Yes.
Hi. Um, for the May 8th, 2018 Board of Chosen Freeholders Meeting, we've been starting our conference agenda of the first one hundred rule.
Freeholders, Octor, Bartlett, Peter, Bass, Duffy, here, LaFour, here, Deputy Director James, here, Director Lozare.
Here. And it's our administrators' report.
Uh, thank you, Director. Uh, at this time, I'd like to call on Dr. Waldron, who is the President of William Patterson College, for a little while longer, right? To maybe some welcoming remarks if you would, or if...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. William Patterson University.
Yes, William Patterson University. Um, good afternoon, I'm Kathleen Waldron, the President, uh, soon to retire President of William Patterson University, and it's my pleasure, um, to welcome the, uh, the Board of Freeholders of Passaic County to the university to conduct your meeting today. Um, so, what the roof, the building you're in right now is our main student union, uh, commons area for students. They're taking final exams right now, um, and started on Monday, and will be taking final exams all week, thus you don't see the normal ebb and flow of students as you would. But I want to thank the Freeholders for joining us and all the support that you've given to the university over the years. Uh, I can't even begin to list all of the supportive things that you've done for us. So, welcome, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
(laughing) After Waldron, we are so happy to be here today. And many of us went to school here, myself included, uh, and we couldn't be more proud than to present you with this proclamation, which if you will indulge me for a minute or two, I would love to read to everyone. Whereas the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic has a desire to recognize Dr. Kathleen Waldron, Ph.D., President of William Patterson University, who is now in her eighth year as leader of one of the largest public universities in New Jersey with more than ten thousand students, and who is planning her retirement at the end of June 2018. And whereas Dr. Waldron holds a Doctorate in Latin American History from Indiana University, and a Bachelor's Degree in History from the State University of New York at Stony Brook, she was a Fulbright Fellow in Venezuelan at the Universitat Catalica?
(inaudible).
At To- okay.[193.12][193.12](laughing). Andres Bello in Caracas, and she has published articles about Venezuelan history. Whereas, under the leadership of Dr. Waldron, the university has increased the number of full-time faculty, improved retention and graduation rates, revitalized student support, completed a strategic plan 2012-2022, and developed several zone master facility plans to renovate and construct new facilities while keeping education affordable with historically low increases in tuition. She has led strategic investment in student faculty research, increased alumni relations, and fill-in thr- (spelled phonetically) it's not the words today, fill-in thrapping, uh, renovated facilities and enhanced outside support for the institution. Whereas, Dr. Waldron has more than nineteen years of experience in higher education and seventeen years of experience in international banking, she served as President of Baruch College of the City University of New York, and Dean of the College of Business at Long Island University. And she worked at Citibank for fourteen years, where she directed Strategic Plan of a Global Private Bank, and served as President of Citibank International in Miami. Whereas, President Waldron is a Fulbright Fellow and received a Social Science Research Council Fellowship. She was recognized as one of the top fifty women in New Jersey by NJ Biz, and was honored by the North Jersey Federal Credit Union as a first recipient of the Annual Woman History Award. The Executive Woman of New Jersey, salute to (inaudible), oh, excuse me. Policiers in New Jersey, received the West Bergen Mental Healthcare Distinguished Service Award, the Executive Woman of New Jersey Salute to Policymakers Award, the Greater Patterson Chamber of Commerce Faith and Patterson Award, the 2013 Garden State Green Award, and the St. Joseph's Wayne Hospital Michael E. LaDissiminelli Community Award. Whereas, Dr. Waldron is a member of the Board of New Jersey Presidents' Council, New Jersey Association of State Colleges and Universities, the Tinker Foundation, the Commerce and Industry Association of New Jersey, and NJEdge.net, and is founding member of the New Jersey Campus Compact. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it publicly recognizes Dr. Kathleen Waldron, Ph.D., for her years of service as President of William Patterson University, and therefore be it proclaimed that this Board extends its sincerest best wishes to Dr. Kathleen Waldron for continued health, happiness, and success.[362.03][362.03](applause) (inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
All right, next on the agenda, we have a proclamation presenting and recognizing Older Americans Month. Uh, we have the Chair of Passaic County Senior Advisory Committee, Michael Servin. Michael, come up. Who's, uh, the, 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 the,[648.12] services that support independent living, involving older adults in community planning, events, and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. And whereas the County of Passaic provides and coordinates numerous services and sponsors many activities to its senior citizen population through its senior disability services and Veterans Affairs Department, including meals on wheels, transportation services, Medicare counseling, care management services, certified home health aides, telephone reassurance, social adult daycare, medical adult daycare, and other information and assistance programs and services. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Chosen Freeholders, that it does hereby designate May 2018 as Older Americans Month, and urges every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as vital parts of our community. And we have certificates for each member of the council, which Michael is all right, I'll let you give us, I think there's more here than folks we have in the room, but for all of you who came out to be part of this evening, thank you so much.
Same turn around instead, you were expecting to say a few thousand words, though. But after the last presentation over here for this doctor of the university, makes me feel how little I've accomplished. Mozart was dead for 40 years by the time he was my age. Seriously, I want to thank this board, you have been, I've been involved with the Senior Advisory Council now for eight or nine years, and you have always been there for us, providing us whatever we've asked for or what we need. I know Bruce for many years over here, I know Pat LaFour, I've seen you before, I've worked with you before, I do appreciate all that you have done. I have to be honest with you, though, I'm a very busy guy on my own, I do many other things besides this council. And after all these years, my predecessor over there, I took this over because I felt it would be something I could still do, because it was a kind of like on a steam train going across the country, nicely. We would stop once in a while, have an event here, have an event there, it was easy. Unfortunately, this year, I thought it was my turn to step up and take over this position and the chairmanship of it. I didn't realize at the same time that Sam's predecessor was also going to be leaving. I've gotten off the steam train, and I am now on the exceller. This man is a house on fire, and he's doing so much, we just got fresh with the senior extravaganza down in Toto. I- I- my phone doesn't stop ringing off the phone, off the hook right now, from seniors that are so thrilled with that event. So, thank you, board, for doing this, thank you, Sam, for what you're doing for us, you look forward to many, many more years of helping you guys out. Thank you.
I grew up with a mother and three sisters who told me never tell a woman's age. They beat that intimate, literally, they beat that intimate. But we're going to make an exception this time, because we are very honored to have with us this evening, this is Fay Rothwell, who on Cinco de Mayo turned 100 years old.
Okay, we have a certificate here for you, but I'd just like to let everybody know a little bit about Fay. Besides being born on May 5, 1918, yeah, I was there Monday, and the place was packed. Sammy, you did a great job, but were you there Monday when I met? Probably, right? I didn't get a chance to see you. Anyway, Fay, this is what was written about you, by Sammy, I think.
Actually, our adult daycare staff, they are the ones who've been with her for so long, and they are here tonight with her, and they're really all the information.
Which I understand the director has a tough time getting you guys to come to staff these, but you're all here tonight. Fay's an important part of your daily lives, I'm very sure of that. Anyway, Fay is patient, is patient kind, and has a great sense of humor. She's a welcome face to any newcomer. She has been part of our daycare family for 18 years. Every morning, she arrives with a smile on her face and a big hello for everyone. That's so nice. She often gets herself coffee and offers to help those who are much more agile, wait, and also to those much more agile. Fay is our resident card shark. Her game of choice is called Screw Your Neighbor.
Really?
You don't want to know what happened to that best neighbor.
Listen, what happens at the senior center stage.
Uh, her secret to being a centurion is be optimistic, try not to worry too much, and have a little shot before bedtime for a good night's sleep. So, on behalf of the entire board, of the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders, we are presenting you with this certificate, the Board of Chosen Freeholders, in recognition and appreciation, awards the certificate to Fay Rothwell, happy 100th birthday, and thank you for your participation in Older Americans Week, May 2018. Congratulations.
Excuse me? I'm stuck. I thought I-
What's your flavor? What's that?
Congratulations, Fay.
I want to also introduce Bob Barazzi, who is a member of Rutgers, executive director of NJCC, on the board of choosers here in Passaic County. I know it's not a paper, Bob, but it's also Bob's birthday today as well, so. Thanks for bringing her down.
Thank you.
Terry.
Hi, Terry.
Director, next, please, my four ladies.
Thank you. I hope everyone got a chance to review the agenda, K1 through K46. I'll start now, because we have a meeting starting.
Through you, Madam Director, we have two, uh, three postponed late starters. One is a resolution referring litigation entitled Leslie Lewis versus Carlos Durante et al. to the law firm of Brendan Wenzel LLC. We have preliminarily labeled that as K46. A resolution referring litigation entitled Cynthia Yeoman et al. versus Edward Leslie Wood III et al. to the law firm under Daniel Tim Davis, DC, we tentatively put that by K48. And the third and last is a resolution authorizing the Department of Human Services to award funding from the state of Jersey Department of Juvenile Justice Commission for calendar year 2018 in a amount of $69,000. We just got the confirmation the other day, and that's why it was prolonged. And we, and we label that as K49.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Agreement? Is there a res- agreement going on in the closing section?
Uh, no, we don't take that, there is not.
Freeholders, Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes. Do we have a motion to open the regular meeting?
Oh, you have to read the announcement.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement now open public meetings laws and satisfied with respect to this being specified, time, date, location, in the public notice that was published in the Herald News and the Bergen Record on April 19, 2018, adopted with resolution R-28-264 on April 10, 2018, filed with Cannon Clerk in Posted Administration Building. Freeholders, Arthur. Bartlett.
Here.
Bass.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
LaFour.
Here.
Deputy Director James.
Here.
Director Lozare.
Here. We have the introductions.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, and graces and love, and so bless thy servants, our freeholders, in this county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety to our Lord, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in pleasurable. Pleasurable. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the freedom of justice for all.
Silence for the men and women of the United States armed forces. Thank you. Motion to approve the minutes of April 24, 2018. For Bartlett.
Freeholders, Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
LaFour. And Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes. Do we have a motion to approve the proclamations?
Move it. Second.
For Duffy.
Freeholder. Freeholders, Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Freeholder Duffy.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes. Freeholder reports, I would just like to mention that this Saturday, May 12, we will have the grand opening of the Day Mansion Visitor Center. I think there's some flyers up here, in case you want to come, it's at 11:00 AM, the museum opens, admission will be free that day, 12 o'clock will be interactive art projects, 2 o'clock is a ceremony and dedication, and 3 o'clock will be a militia drill. There's also going to be food, you know, to buy up there, or you can bring a picnic, it's a beautiful place for a picnic. But I just wanted to invite everybody there that day, it's going to be a great day. Anybody else?
I, Madam Director, just, I want to point out there are two resolutions on the agenda that are worth going. R2, as everyone knows, our county engineer, Steve Edmund, who worked for the county for 30-plus years, is retiring at the end of the month, and a resolution accepting his resignation because his appointed positions on the agenda, and of course, it is with regret, Steve, but we do wish you all the best in retirement. And to go along with R2, we have R35, which will be appointing Jonathan Parra, the next county engineer for the unexpired term, which Stephen Edmund, so congratulations to you both. What happened to my vote? No to yes. We'll have a constitutional crisis. I think we've got enough of them right now.
I didn't realize, I missed my chance, did I?
Oh, absolutely.
You know, tonight already has been a great example of some of the exceptional service and outreach that we do, but whenever someone who works at the Passaic County Department of Health, I want to make sure that we are all aware of it, and I just wanted to share with everyone who's watching tonight, and everyone who's here tonight, that Sarah Elnaqib, who works in our Department of Health, and in conjunction with the Rutgers Extension Program, that we do so much of our public health work with, was recognized last week with an Outreach Excellence Award from Rutgers University for her work in Patterson Public Schools as a low-income urban school district to increase children's nutrition. I just want to read for a moment what was said about Sarah when she received this award. Patterson Public Schools is a low-income urban district mandated to provide free breakfast and lunch to all students under the community eligibility provision of the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act. Implementation of this mandate, however, led to a large amount of food waste and consequently extra expense. Sarah addressed this issue by educating all 210 food service workers in the district in the principles of smarter lunchroom movement, a national effort that provides the knowledge and resources needed to build a lunchroom that makes healthy food choices the easy choice. Her efforts made lunchroom food offerings more appealing, directly leading to a 14% reduction in food waste, with nearly half the food saved consisting of fruits and vegetables. In other words, she got kids to eat fruits and vegetables. This means, of course, that by creating a policy to allow, to, not only, in addition to, to improving public health for our children, by creating a policy to allow donations of unopened packaged foods, the district was also able to donate over 7,000 pounds of food in seven months to a local food pantry. So, I see Dr. Nungo is here with us from our Department of Health, but I just want to all to recognize Sarah for her great work and the fact that she was recognized by Rutgers. And just briefly, I also want to invite everyone to join us two weeks from tonight for Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, which will be our celebration on our next meeting.
Anybody else?
Second.
James and Mark.
Freeholders, Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Freeholder Duffy.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes. Do we have a motion to open the public portion of the meeting?
See, no one to put in the move.
We didn't take the vote on opening it, yes.
What did you say?
Freeholders, most, freeholders, Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Well, sure.
LaFour. Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes. Do we have a motion to speak to the voting, we have three minutes, take your name and address.
Okay, Freeholders.
Yeah.
Ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
See, no one to put in the move, to close the public portion.
Second.
Duffy and Mark. Yes, sir.
Freeholders, Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes. Okay, can I have a motion to add the three late starters, K1, 7, 48, and 49?
Move it. Second.
James and LaFour.
Freeholders, Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, K1 through K49?
I'll make a move.
Second.
Duffy and LaFour.
Freeholders, Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes. Address. Do we have a motion to accept the personnel agenda?
Move the personnel.
Second.
LaFour and James.
Freeholders, Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes. Do we have a motion to accept the belts?
Move the belts.
Second.
LaFour and James.
Freeholders, Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes. Do we have a motion to accept the belts?
Move certification and payroll.
Second.
Oh, yeah, that's, uh, LaFour and James.
Freeholders, Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes. Do we have a receipt of departmental records?
Received upon.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move it. A motion.
Second.
LaFour and Duffy.
Freeholders, Bartlett.
Yes.